Forum. You want to approve the agenda in the minutes? For a second?
A second.
All they write. All right. Agenda we have. Rich, good morning.
Morning. Well, uh. Got this, uh. Twenty line agreement I'll look over and probably give you guys next week kind of approve for it's just our county twenty eighty. They want to get it recorded with the state. We already have had one. I don't think I kind of paged through it a little bit. There's not a whole lot different. Just want to look through it one more time so we can put on the agenda for next week for a discussion, possible approval.
Yep.
Uh, project wise, uh, we're in a pre four meeting for the thirtieth bridge at eleven o'clock. So they want to probably start pouring that deck this week. My guess is the deck will be poured, um, by the end of the week for sure. Uh. I'm sure they got to still form railings up and whatnot, and they still have bridge approaches when they're done. We did check the full lines of that rip rap and it seemed to fit what the plan is supposed to be.
Okay.
When you're shooting rip rap, you've got the high parts of rock, low parts of rock, everything between. So it's
Okay, for sure.
Within inches of what it should be. So it's hard to say. And once you get that other driveway taken out, we'll see.
Yeah, they damage pipe there.
There is an outlet there they're gonna fix. There's a, there's a, trying to put their cross pipe in there. There's just a steel one there that needs to be. They'll fix it.
Okay.
We'll make sure it gets done. So we're sure. Yeah, that's so, um. Subcontractors out on one oh five this morning. They're gonna start coring out the shoulders. I thought maybe this morning I'd start seeing plant stuff show up at the plant site, but there's nothing there yet. Um, I know they've got some base work to do out there for the plant, so they'll, I don't know when they'll start doing that, but I know that they were supposedly done hauler. Paving on Friday where they were at, and then it's gonna start mobilizing their plant to Worth County here. So.
So the core shoulders or they do field approaches until they actually.
They're just gonna, yeah, they're well. They're gonna core out. I suppose if we have to pull material back into field drivers, we can. It's only two inches. So it's not like a really deep thing anyway. No different than a edge drop off. So.
No.
But they're gonna have a, they'll come off the edge of the pavement, then do two inches for three feet and it'll be back up again. And then the windrow stuff off. So it won't be that big of a, of a, a break off anyway. So. And then, um, they still haven't moved the pavement down by the bridge yet. They're gonna do that once they get some trucks lined up. So. We took the pavement off the bridge deck, I guess, last week. There was really nothing major there. So we kind of went down and we opened up the, cleaned some silt down by the bridge too and got that stream running through the middle of the bridge again. So that's all done. So.
Okay.
Um. That's about it. Trying to think then else construction wise. Got going on. Yeah, I'm still working with, uh. The Wind Tower people yet. And they want to finalize their, their post construction road thing that I haven't gotten back yet. So. Yeah, we keep. Phone calls back and forth. You want to make sure I got the report. I haven't seen their post report yet. I know there's some funding yet that we were working on that they haven't paid us for yet. So.
Okay.
In the agreement, so. Anyway, I think that's all I've got for you an update this week unless you guys got questions on some things.
Just, uh. Russ, we'll talk to the Glutsons. I think it was.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that gonna be taken care of?
I'm trying to remember what that was now, because I know I talked.
Go out in the ditch.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I put a word, he came up. A week ago and, and there's a, I, I think he, he said there's some fiber optic tape there. So I wonder if they didn't cut through it. So.
That's what I.
We got a work order put together for that. So that'll be.
Thank you. They came to us first and.
Yeah, they came there, then we came up here and then I went up there and talked to him. I said, then I looked at the aerial and it'd been there for a while. So.
Yeah, it's on. He said Wayne and actually, Trenton would actually turn it in once.
That might have earlier this year. And I, yeah, I can't remember what I did. Create a work order for it. So.
Okay, appreciate it.
And if there is, if there is a fiber optic in there that damaged, it will go after them.
More likely it's somewhere down there. It's another two foot deep or whatever.
Right, so. Anyway.
Three hundred and eightieth. And Del Rock River. The. Whatever delineator, the. Signs, the bridge signs.
Yep.
Got hit.
Okay.
Farmer must have hung over. Yeah, I gotta call Saturday.
Object markers.
Object markers, yeah, the those metal signs or whatever. So.
All right.
Somebody check on that. Get them back in place. It's fairly big grid, but.
That's a long one there. The long bridge.
Three eighty.
Okay. All right, we'll get them.
Yeah, so we check on that.
Yep. All right.
Good, thanks, sir. Rainage. I didn't see any claims.
I didn't see claims.
We got all the. Stuff, other stuff taken care of last week with the engineers, right?
Yeah, we're busy.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, regular claims.
Any questions?
Questions, comments, concerns?
Make motion to approve the claims.
I second. All right. Short special, all they write. I opposed. All right, what shall carry? Uh, any reports? Nope. Payroll eligibility or salary changes?
That's true. Oh, yeah.
Well, sorry. Uh, second one for public health. Temporary nurse and then, uh. Increase the pay for. Kirsten, one of the sheriff's office. That's just because she's out there for probationary. Permission entering.
Okay.
Motion to approve the, uh. Salary change at the payroll eligibility. I'll make a motion to prove those. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
All they write.
All right.
I oppose. Here. All right. With your license? Uh, twenty eight E with RSVP of Western Ohio.
Just cranking through the last ones.
Are we getting close, are we?
Well, I gotta, I gotta rewrite one of them a little bit and I. I gotta go back Northwood. Um, we got their senior center, but then we send a check also to their meals on wheels, which is. I think a separate entities. So I'm trying to figure that out too. This is just from. Trying to get them all.
Uh, taking motion to approve twenty eight E agreement with the RSVP. For a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All they write?
All right.
All right, opposed? Motion period.
And the ones that we do have signed agreements, uh, the checks went out on Monday. So we'll keep them going through.
All right, uh, resolution authorizing early redemption of general obligation urban renewal bond series twenty twelve A. And something off.
Yeah, so. You guys got the information from me that hopefully this makes me nervous when we're kind of like having the money sitting there, but apparently that's not the way it's supposed to go. So, um, we are going to, um, just, um, this is just to set the hearing so that we can do what we need to do.
Okay. That's the post that.
Oh, yeah, and the paper and all that good stuff.
Twenty days or. No, well, must.
The attorney's helping me.
Is he?
Yeah, good. Yeah.
Okay. So do we have a date for that or?
Yeah, it will be, let's see. I guess we're just authorized. Sorry, we're authorizing the.
Oh, authorizing.
Reduction, yeah.
Okay. Make a motion. Motion to authorize early redemption of the general obligation bond, renewal bond twenty twelve A. Their second.
I'll second that.
All right. Expression. So we have public hearings to follow in the future. Uh, the roll call vote to Lowberg, uh, this may be tar, stone, I. That motion will pass. But where's that go?
Yep.
Morning.
Two please.
Morning. Um, I've approved one candidate for venture school this fall, so that'll be exciting. And then, um, today I do onboard training as a coach with a couple of other people. For venture school. So that it's gonna be changed. It'll be something new. Um, we're, there's still discussions moving forward with that prospect in Manly. Um. AJ, just let me know if you need a court authority meeting scheduled. And then I will be, um, at PDI Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week.
Okay, I'm gonna touch base with Lee again today and. See what's going on down there.
Okay.
Let you know after that. Maybe if you're ever gone, if we need to, we'll set something up for the following week maybe. So. Right. Um, how'd your meeting go with your lease prospect?
Good, good. We're meeting tomorrow with SPD seats to go over the, um, different options that that business has either to. Purchase a lot and build or to be a leasing to a developer.
Yeah. Or another, hopefully we get somebody to start out there.
Mm-hmm.
All right, you guys got anything for us? Okay, sounds good. Thanks and safe travels this week.
Thanks.
All right, uh, Jeff Thorball, zoning commission chairperson. With a special on inventory development agreement and the order to certain dates.
Supervisors. All right, thank you. Um, first of all, I want to apologize upfront for the length of my comments to everybody. It's a big topic and there's a, there's a lot to consider. Uh, so I do, I speak today, uh, as the chair of the zoning commission. And I'm pleased to see that the supervisors have added to the agenda today, the consideration of the ordinance recommended by the zoning commission a couple of months ago. Uh, I also note that Invenergy has continued to work on their desire to have supervisors sign a separate development agreement, uh, hidden from the public. Taking action on that agreement would in effect bypass the current permitting processes in our zone townships, excuse me. And negate any actions the supervisors might take with regard to the ordinance that the supervisors asked for. An ordinance, by the way, that was developed in full view of and with public input from the public. Therefore, the supervisors should pause any further secret agreement discussion within energy and act on what was stated in your resolution twenty one point oh four point oh five. Vote on the recommended ordinance. As a recap to the current state, the supervisors passed a moratorium on any actions related to commercial wind development. Quote, for the purpose of drafting and adopting any necessary and proper revision to a wind ordinance. Unquote. After intensive work in support of that, the zoning commission did as asked and performed a vast amount of research. Engaged in public, in comprehensive public input. Including requests to Invenergy for review of the draft, which they declined. To develop a draft ordinance that provides the type of protections asked for in the moratorium resolution. Frankly, it's been frustrating to watch Invenergy ignore the moratorium in the county processes and attempt to bypass it with a development agreement favorable to them and held secret from the public. At least the belief is that the agreement is favorable, favorable to them based on hearing the little bit we have heard. Since no one outside of Invenergy, the supervisors or the lawyers have seen it. This brings me to a key procedural and potentially legal question. The moratorium expressly placed a pause on activities related to commercial wind development. Until adoption of any necessary and proper ordinance to govern those activities. Those are words from the supervisor's resolution. It would seem that any independent work on a secret agreement with Invenergy, instead of discussion and vote on the ordinance that was asked for by the supervisors in the resolution. Would be completely inappropriate. Thankfully, however, the ordinance is now finally on the agenda for discussion. I would strongly urge the supervisors to adhere to their resolution and suspend any further discussion of a development agreement. Until you carry out the actions specified in the resolution. In fact, no agreement should be signed until the decision is made and the permitting process has occurred. Whether under a new wind ordinance or existing zoning ordinance. There's no favorable reason for the county to sign any agreements before the permitting process. Unless the desire is to bypass permitting, which at a minimum would be a violation of public trust. As to the agenda item today for request by Invenergy to set a date on the development agreement. I believe the answer has been clear since April in the language of the supervisor's resolution twenty one point oh four oh five. Nothing will be done or discussed until an ordinance has been adopted or the moratorium has expired July first twenty twenty two. That should be the response today. In light of the length of time, the ordinance recommendation was made by the zoning commission, I want to provide with a recap of some key items to consider. Invenergy claims the proposed terms in their development agreement related to sound, shadow and setback. Represent the strictest terms evident in any agreements anywhere in Iowa and provide adequate protection to citizens. Perhaps it's true that other counties have been trampled on by this kind of development without such a development agreement, much in the way Deer Creek advanced. That speaks volumes about what their earlier practices had been. That, however, is not the bar that should be set. In other words, the goal should not be the strongest development agreement that Invenergy has proposed. But rather the bar should be the adequate protection of the citizens and county at large. We've only heard a little bit of their secret agreement squeak through, so public knowledge is limited. Ostensibly, their proposal was a fifteen hundred foot setback from residences, thirty hours of shadow flicker per year. And fifty decibels of noise measured in some unknown fashion. Conversely, the language in the proposed ordinance contains a great deal of detail. Developed after careful research of authoritative documents and a great deal of public review and input. With that as the basis, I'd like to speak to those three key points, sound, shadow and setbacks. As the zoning commission stated in our initial recommendation rationale document. Our belief is that setbacks are necessary for safety reasons. Shadow limits can be separately defined and managed and sound limits can be separately defined and managed. I won't go into an exhaustive detail of what we've already submitted in our rationale document, but I will recap in summary. With regard to property rights, as a basic rule, the zoning commission concluded that property rights begin at one's property line. I don't think there's a valid legal or common sense argument against that point. Even the energy companies own wind easement agreements with landowners. Apply the effects to the property at large, not just at the residence. The impact of sound, shadow and safety issues should be managed at the property lines, not limited to one's residence. The commission determined that to do otherwise would constitute government taking of personal property rights. By burdening non turbine hosting property owners with negative impacts from sound, shadow and safety concerns. Keep in mind that participating landowners expressly waived those wind right, wind effect rights on their land in exchange for compensation. Why should neighbors be treated differently? This reason, the zoning commission unanimously rejected limits being posed only to residents. We urged the supervisors to recognize and adopt this principle as well. With regard to sound, sound is comprised of frequency vibrations. They are uniquely created by individual things. And uniquely impacted by surroundings. Some sounds can be heard by some people and some sounds cannot be heard but can be felt. They are real. There is no scientific debate about those facts. These impacts are tolerated more by some than by others. Since the zoning commission decided we cannot know who would or would not tolerate these impacts better than others. We decided that we would establish specific limits in language appropriate for acoustic testing and validation. That represent what professional acousticians and science indicated was a proper limits for our rural areas. The issue of sound is complex and a simple statement of not more than X decibels. Is fraught with means for interpretation and frankly not appropriate as a legal limit. That's why the proposed ordinance goes into the detail that it does. I'd also point out that the information and assurances provided by Invenergy related to sound impacts are questionable. They provided a map showing sound level contours and claim that shows proof that no one would be subjected to sound impacts above a certain level. To put it graciously, that's misleading. As anyone knows, sound dominated by an operational wind turbine is unique to the specific turbine technology. Invenergy has stated as recently as last week on September twentieth, that they've not yet selected their turbine technology. It's therefore not possible to develop accurate sound pattern contours as they submitted on August ninth. Additionally, they also stated at the time that the sites were just potential sites. Since sound radiation is dramatically impacted by terrain contours and vegetation cover. Showing a map with identical pattern, uh, sound pattern contours is indicative of naive or inaccurate results. Neither of which should be the basis of any decision. Those patterns simply cannot be accurate. And it is not possible to claim that no one would be impacted based on those contours. We urge the supervisors to rely on the sound detail, uh, in the proposed ordinance, not just the sound limits, but the additional detail related to planning, design, testing and compliance. Similar to shadow, shadow throat is impacted by terrain and the specific turbine. It begs the question then of accuracy of the predicted shadow impacts presented by Invenergy in August. When they all look alike on their map. Even though each would be installed on and surrounded by different terrain features and they've not yet selected the turbines. It's not possible for them to have common effect contours. Secondly, why should anyone be subjected to the shadow flicker for any length of time as planned by Invenergy? If you've not seen shadow flicker in someone's house, I'm sure there are any number of your constituents that would invite you in for a cup of coffee to sit and endure it. And no, you can't simply close the blind. It bleeds right through. And what a terrible cruel response to your constituents. Their concern saying it's only thirty hours a year. Close your blinds. The overwhelming input during the zoning commission work was for no shadow impact. We urged you to adopt that principle. With regard to safety zone setbacks, as we stated in our original rationale document. We believe that if sound and shadow limits are adequately defined and managed, that setbacks are then used for safety purposes. Recognizing that various turbine technology and sizes have a corresponding impact to safety distances. We did not simply affix a standard setback distance as Invenergy is trying to do. Which, by the way, is a distance that may have been appropriate for the smaller turbines like those installed on Mark's land in the early two thousands. It's not appropriate for the size installed in Deer Creek and certainly not for the ones larger than that. Our language established a minimum safety zone that came straight out of a turbine manufacturer guidance for turbines of a specified size. And then goes on to recognize the unique impacts of different sized turbines. And provides a formula for increased safety setbacks as the turbines grow in size. We also added provisions to use the safety zone distances as specified by the individual turbine manufacturers. So our safety zones could be even more exact to the turbine. We believe that our guidance on safety setbacks are based on wind turbine manufacturers own guidance and on sound logic. We rejected a simple statement of fifteen hundred feet for all turbines regardless of size. Our guidance was overwhelmingly supported by those that provided feedback. And we urged the supervisors to concur. I've only touched on three hot button issues among the many other issues that are in the, uh, in the ordinance. Beyond the great detail contained in the ordinance related to those three issues, which by the way can have waivers, the engagement with neighbors. The ordinance addresses at least thirty seven additional items. Ranging from public notice requirements to signal interference. Issue resolution and transferability, just to name a few. You may recall the challenges encountered in Deer Creek when responsibility was transferred on that project. I've not seen the secret Invenergy agreement, so I don't know everything that it covers, but I doubt that it covers all of the things encompassed by the recommended ordinance. As you consider the ordinance and hear from Invenergy and perhaps others, you'll hear about standards. I would point out that there is no such thing as standards when it comes to these issues. Rules in place around the state and elsewhere are as varied as a color chart. Keep in mind too, that many of the other ordinances around the county, around the country are many years old. We've learned a lot in the past fifteen years and turbine technology has continued to grow. Old conditions are simply not appropriate to new technology. So let's ignore those kinds of comments about standards and look at the details presented in the proposal and why they are there. I also want to rebut any assertions that the ordinance would preclude wind projects in the county. It expressly does not, nor was it designed to. It is true that it levies restrictions on commercial wind development that are stronger in place in some locations. Remember though, many of those other locations come under ordinances that were developed ten to fifteen years ago for twenty year old turbine technology. That should not preclude us from having updated protect protections. Remember also that the ordinance provides a path for reduction of some of those restrictions via waiver by engagement with citizens that would otherwise be negatively impacted. I know of no legal or common sense principle that says impacted citizens can or should be ignored. This is a rhetorical question, but do you believe that neighbors should be ignored or run over as implied by Invenergy's lawyer on August ninth? If not, then the addition of the guidance, the adoption of the guidance in the draft would ensure that they are not. To the point made by Invenergy's counsel last month, that no one buys impacted easements from non turbine hosting landowners. Just because you've not done it in the past is no reason it can't be explored in the future. The alternative to run over people is not the right path. If the other option is to work with those people, then talk with and work with those people. Don't simply push them and their concerns aside. Looking at the Invenergy map that was shown in August, roughly half of the proposed turbine sites already have signed easements around them. Talk to the others. It's the right thing to do. We should also recognize that the current zoning ordinance calls for conditional use permit for each turbine location in the zone township. Yet leaves the details of those conditions completely open. Alternatively, the proposed ordinance has very clear conditional requirements along with application, review and approval process. Among the many other things I mentioned a few moments ago. Even Mark Crowell from Invenergy has stated that he prefers a process where the details are, are clearly laid out. Versus one where the review and approval process is open for interpretation. The proposed ordinance is clearly an improvement on the conditional use permitting. The belief of the zoning commission and majority feedback received. Was that the proposed ordinance was comprehensive and the best path forward for the county. Remember, it was unanimously approved by the commission. Especially in light of what happened in the past and was asked for by the citizens and supervisors. The issues have a variety of complexities to them, and frankly, that's why the proposed ordinance is as large as it is. The fact that it articulates some things that other county ordinances may not. Should not be viewed as a negative or judgment against it. Instead, it should be a testament to the amount of input we received, research performed and conscientious manner that the zoning commission approached it. I once again urge the supervisors to adopt the draft as an ordinance governing commercial wind development in the county. And according with your resolution. It is only after that action that the permitting process can begin and discussion within energy continue. My message for the supervisors is that the zoning commission did our job and presented you our recommended ordinance. Developed with full public input as called for in your resolution. Please discuss, vote on, and hopefully pass the ordinance. It's what you asked for and it's the right thing to do. Taking action on a secret agreement with Invenergy instead of that path would be a violation of your resolution. Even if you don't pass the proposed ordinance. I would point out that the signing of a development agreement with Invenergy before expiration of the moratorium and the permitting process. Could create a legal conflict between the existing zoning ordinance that requires a conditional use permit for each turbine and the development agreement. Any agreement signed with Invenergy should come after the permitting process. Whether it be the current zoning ordinance or more comprehensive wind ordinance. After satisfaction of the terms of your resolution twenty one point oh four point oh five. Uh, I also understand that, um, Invenergy was supposed to provide you folks with a updated map based on the, uh, the meeting last week. I would ask that if that map has been provided or when it's provided, that it be posted on the county website so that the public has knowledge. I stand ready at any time, uh, of the supervisor's convenience to address any questions you may have regarding the conclusions and details developed by the zoning commission. And, uh, just a quick ancillary update with regard to the development plan. We met with the, uh, township trustees, or I met with township trustees. Uh, last week and they asked instead of the, uh, trustees at large part of the subcommittee for development plan. Uh, that it be one township trustee per township. So we'll work with the township, uh, clerks to identify who that person is.
But you guys should appoint them, shouldn't you?
The, to that committee?
Yeah.
The one on each township? I don't know. We could, I mean.
The township trustees seem to think that they should determine which of them.
Represents that.
Represents the township on that committee.
Two.
There's three.
Cause you appoint who's on the zoning board in the first place.
Right, yeah. But they are elected too, right?
Yes.
Township trustees are elected. Basically like any other thing, no, I guess we go for volunteers first. It was, you know, somebody comes up and volunteers to be on a committee, really is.
I'll, I'll.
Take that because that's the tricky part to find is volunteers. So.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to each of the township trustee clerks and relate. Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to each of the township trustee clerks and relate what the township trustees had, had told us last week. About one per and we'll see where that goes. Decided direction from that.
Right. Cause I mean, if somebody doesn't want to participate in it, we can't really appoint that person. You know, if they're not interested in it, but if you got people that want to do it, then.
Right. Yeah, I think the, the trick is going to be if there's a township where they don't come up with. A, you know, with one of the trustees to participate.
Right, right. And then yeah, if we get a list, we can, we can appoint them all to comprehensive planning committee because it's something that's going to have to be looked into in the future anyways. We can't just do it now and then let it set for another ten, fifteen years. You know, it's gotta be looked at. Very so often. So if those township trustees are still around or still in that position, then they just remain on that board, just or that committee, just like the rest of them are. Uh, the rest of the people on the other committees are. And whatever else, so. Yeah, I guess we'll see if they can come up with a list and. You can appoint. Establish a committee for that. I would agree.
So the list they're coming up with are the ones that are willing.
Well, it either that or they, you know, within each township trustee group, they elect one of their members to serve on. I, I don't know how they'll go about identifying. My intent was just to send a letter to the clerk, to each of the township clerks and say, the township trustees during their meeting. Said that they preferred that one township trustee from each township be appointed to the subcommittee. Can you let us know who that is? How they come up with that person is kind of up to the township.
Yeah, I mean, they're all from the same township, so it's. This is representation from the township. That's what we're after, as we can get it county wise versus. Just a certain area. And all township trustees are rural, rural residents, so.
Well.
They're not.
No, they're just in the township.
Yeah, the township.
You have three right from town.
Lincoln.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's several.
That's what made you think that, sorry.
Well, technically you can't. How does that work? You can't vote if you're in town, but you can still be on the board. Cause like Grove, we have, um, Dan Hendrickson. And he is still on, but he lives in town. He doesn't vote for himself because he gets a city ballot, but he can still. Be appointed on that board. Yeah, there's a little. There's a little caveat to it.
Yeah, so would he be eligible?
Yeah.
Yeah, he just doesn't get a township ballot, so he can't vote for himself.
Yeah, yeah.
But he can be voted in by the township.
He gets a city ballot.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Jeff. Um, you guys have any questions for Jeff at all?
Is there? Is there any reason that? The development agreement as it is right now, not finished, can't be put on the website so people can look at it?
Nobody's requested it yet.
Well, I'd say first.
Okay, if it's allowed to. What do you think, Will? Is that able to go out or is that something that's? Was presented to us originally.
We're, we're at the point now where, um, I think that it's in a final form. Ready for you guys to vote on. So I think it's appropriate to go ahead and. Put that on the website and that would include the, um, mapping attachments that Mr. Goreball just referenced at the end of his. Um, time, the, the, the map showing the, uh, locations. I think that it's appropriate for that to, uh, go on your website.
We'll pass that on to our IT guy then. And you're gonna send us that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide it to you guys.
Thank you. Alright, so yeah, we can go, Joe, post that stuff and so this. Public knowledge out there. He's gone all week, remember?
Yep, and he's still.
He's capable.
Just asking if he can transmit from anywhere, so all he needs is a network. It's wifi.
Didn't just cover him for him a little bit that he is gone, so he might not get to it right away.
Right.
He's on his time.
It's on his time. He's like, he is on his time.
Um, thank you for all this, Jeff. Once again, we're gonna have these discussions here in just a little bit, so. We will get that stuff submitted to Joel and get that put out as soon as he can. So, thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Alright, uh, Mark Crowell, good morning.
Good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yep, very good.
Alright, well, good deal. Um, you know, I'm just gonna start with a couple, just a couple of comments here, um, based on a few things that Jeff said, but. But not spend too much time on any of it. Um. You know, I, I, I do think it's, it's somewhat telling of, you know, somebody in that position to have such a strong opposition to. Um, you know, to a process that's outside of, of the zoning ordinance process. Um, you know, quite frankly, going through there, you know, I, it, in, in Jeff's comments, you know, it's hard to delineate. Between where his role as a, as a zoning commission chair begins and where his opposition to. You know, these, these projects ends and, and starts as well. And, you know, I mean, just somebody that, that, that should have an unbiased. Unbiased position there to create an ordinance that should work for the best of all of the folks in the county. I just think. You know, it's very telling, uh, that he uses some of his time here, uh, to speak to such a strong degree against. Um, against a, a, a development agreement that is a, a really sound and solid solution. To the unique circumstances that the worthwhile wind project has been in. Um, you know, I'll just, I'll just stop right there instead of going point by point. Um, you know, and, and noting too, that some of the, some of the information that was conveyed in that. Uh, that speech there as fact is not specifically pertaining to the sound aspect and not having the ability to have an adequate representation. Of sound contours based on turbine technology. Um, that, that portion of, um, of Jeff's recital was, was wholly inadequate and, and not accurate. But, you know, I will say, at the end of the day, you know, I certainly appreciate Jeff's, um, Jeff's time that he's putting into that, that aspect of. Of the zoning process. Um, you know, we, we have pursued an alternative or alternative approach given where. Uh, our project was given i- it is in a really unique solution being so advanced. Um, you know, and am respectful of that process that he is going down and would think that somebody that. You know, truly is fully unbiased would kind of respect the process too of where our project is, uh, as well. But with all of that being said, that's not what I'm here to do today. Uh, my, my time here is allocated to just requesting that we get some time on the calendar. Um, to go ahead and vote on the development agreement that, that we have. As Will mentioned, we think it's final. Um, talked about it last week and would request that we get this on the agenda for Monday, uh, to actually have a vote on it.
Okay. You guys have any questions or concerns for Mark?
Not for Mark, mine or for Will. I got one of them between late Friday and he's gonna get back to me and I got two more of them I gotta ask him.
Yeah, he still has one, nice one.
Oh, did you get, did they get back to you on that question I have for you, Will, of Friday, late Friday?
Um. Uh, so in, in talking about zoned townships versus unzoned, that question?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, Brett Dublinsky, uh, who's Worthwhile Winds attorney, he and I spoke on Friday. And we both agree that the way the development agreement is written. That in the zoned townships, the existing zoning law requiring permitting. Still applies. The development agreement does not abrogate or do away with the existing. Uh, zoning requirements. Um, in fact, in the zoned townships, the development agreement adds an extra layer. Of protection to the county, um, because they have to comply with one, the zoning code as it exists, plus the, um. There's a review process under the development agreement that the county has, and that's actually county wide, even in the unzoned portion. So. Long story short, the existing zoning ordinance as it applies to, um, turbines still, still is in play.
Gotcha. Do you have the agreement in front of you? Or would you like me to ask you the other questions later on here this week? Like later today?
Ask the question, I'll tell you whether I want to answer it now or in a closed session.
When it comes down to use of right of ways and drainage infrastructure. It says in here, under A, it says that worthwhile wind will use Worth County Road right of ways. And county grants worthwhile wind and easement to use such road right of ways as set forth this agreement. It is further anticipated that all right of way crossings of paved roadways will be undergoing underground boarings perpendicular to the right of ways. Plus or minus thirty degrees. And that would tell me that they cannot go down our right of ways. But yet in the second part down here, under B, it says worthwhile wind. Have the right in the manner and to the same extent above to operate the facilities in, along and under and across said right of ways. And drainage infrastructure. They're at same along, which means it goes down the right of way.
I need to read that closer and I'll answer that specifically to you later.
Okay, um.
Put it out there.
Yeah. Um. It says. This is to do with on the fifteenth anniversary of the ops, of the operation date. It says the removal security shall be equal to the estimated amount, if any, the net removal cost. By which the cost of removing the wind power facility exceeds the salvage value of such wind power facility. To extent that the net removal costs are zero, the removal security shall not be required on the part of worthwhile wind. So if saying to me that if there's a hundred thousand dollars worth of salvage material. And it costs a hundred thousand dollars to take the windmill down, that worthwhile wind is out of the picture? That now we gotta deal with a salvage company?
No, no, that's not how I read that. You're talking under five. G.
Yes.
Where it's on the fifteenth. Okay, so on the fifteenth anniversary. Worthwhile Wind needs to deliver a bond, letter of credit or other financial assurance. Um, securing performance of the obligation to remove. Um, what this is saying is that if the turbine has value to worthwhile wind. That is at or above the amount of the cost to remove. Worthwhile Wind does not need to obtain a bond or some other security to say they'll remove it because they, they still have value in it. What this, what this provision is getting at is if it's gonna cost a hundred grand to remove, but the thing is only worth fifty grand. Worthwhile Wind would have no reason to come in and remove it because they would be spending more money. So it, it protects landowners when that's the situation, but this is saying. When the turbine still has value, worthwhile winds gonna wanna go in and get it if they need to remove it because it still has value to them and they'll still come out on top. Does that make sense?
That does.
I should be able to get you guys, um, this updated copy. Fifteen minutes or so after I leave the meeting, by the way, so you guys can get that out and share that with constituents.
Gotcha. Um, back on. Oh wow. Uh, when you get back to number fifteen. Under disputes. It says, should a dispute arise between the parties on whether hazardous road condition exists as defined in section two A? And when I go back to two A. Two A is about use. And right of ways. Um, I gotta go back and check on that one. I think that's the questions I had for you and you can get back to me on that one that you had to check on. If I come up with anymore, I'll let you know immediately today.
Sounds good.
The biggest one I had concern about was, I did not want the development agreement. To. Void out. The zoning that we had in Heartland and Brookfield. Even if the development agreement is signed, whether it is or not, I have no idea. They still have to go through that permit processing in Heartland and Brookfield with the different permits that they. In other words, they gotta get a permit for each one of the windmill sites, correct?
In the zone townships, yes.
Townships.
Under the existing ordinance.
And what threw me was when, the way it's read. You know, it says the parties agree that worthwhile wind is in the public interest of its build and operating in accordance with existing zoning ordinance. That April first twenty one, in those areas where the zoning ordinance applies. That's exactly the way we want it. In accordance with the development terms in this agreement, in both the zoned and onzone portion of Worth County. I don't understand why it's got zoned there. It should say just agreement in the onzone portions of Worth County with this agreement. That's what threw me, but you checked with Brett and you both are in agreement that they gotta get permitting.
Think of it like this. Here's the, um, unzoned portions. Um, this development agreement provides the only layer of protection. Here's the zoned townships. You've got the zoning ordinance already and then you've got the development agreement. So worthwhile wind has, if they're gonna come in and the zoned portion, they have to comply with. The existing ordinance plus the development agreement. So that's why it says and.
Gotcha. If I was a lawyer, I wouldn't have to ask these questions.
Hey, that's why I'm here.
Considering that I gotta make a decision on it, I wanna know what's going on.
That you're asking questions. Um, by the way. Mark, I guess I'll, I'll talk with Brett. The, the, the portion that defines. It goes back to the definition of section two A for hazardous road condition. I think we need to update the reference because I think it's actually. Paragraph three A or section three A now, Eunice, that might have been why you were confused.
Yeah, in other words, when I referenced back there, that was not, that, that was wrong.
It's the next, it's the next big section down?
Yep. Cause as I referenced back, I went, well, that's not right. So that just caught my eye, but I lost track of it here trying to. Page through sixteen pages of this puppy.
Good, anything else?
Seeing if it's just following up, you know, here on the, on the initial question and see if we can, we can get this slotted here for a decision over on, on next Monday.
Good.
Thank you all.
Revote next Monday?
As long as we get the stuff, the issues, we get information back from Will and their lawyers on the questions we've got. We know exactly what's going on with this thing. Then I have no problem voting on it. What do you think?
I'm, I'm done with it. I, I've had enough. Um, I'm not, I'm done negotiating with Invenergy. I'm a little upset that they didn't want to even discuss the big three. It's never been a discussion. It's just been, this is all you get. This is what we're willing to do and that's it. Um, I've been trying to keep common ground. I've been trying to make sure the people that want these turbines on their land can get them. But it's not happening and it's not happening because Invenergy doesn't want it. To, to deal. They don't wanna work. Um, they want it their way or they want it no way. And so I, we can. And so I, we can put it on for a vote. That's totally fine. Um but I'm done. I'm I'm more looking forward to uh an ordinance instead. Just because the fact that. They don't want to they don't want to negotiate on the terms they want to negotiate on. They don't want to negotiate on the terms that are truly the important terms. So. It it would be different if they even knew what they were doing. They don't know what turbines are putting up. They don't know nothing. Um they're not as far along in this process as as they think. And Mark, we've been out, we've talked. I've taken you out to Deer Creek, showing you what's going on. Stressing the discussion of setbacks and sound and uh. Shadow flicker and it got me nowhere, so. I I'm I'm done with it. I'm ready to move forward on ordinance that's going to protect the citizens.
Glad the ability to comment here just briefly, or is that? Okay. Um you know, I mean, I will say just the the information that was included in there was. A in the development agreement today, a lot of the concessions that we made were in direct. Response to conversations that you and I had AJ about, you know, establishing a standard for those, you know. Specifically for those unzoned portions of the county that don't have any. Uh any protections right now, um you know, and being able to do that and go above and beyond what's required by. I, you know, the laws of of Worth County today, establishing. Establishing the big three, right? I mean, making sure that we have that information in there. Uh whereas as otherwise outside of the development agreement process there, it's it's, you know, it's not applicable. Um and then I think, you know, hopefully too, just to kind of bring back and remind you of the. Of the extent to which. These these design parameters remove our workable footprint. So we started with, you know, thirty thousand acres of sign footprint. And when you apply all of this, we get down to only five hundred acres of potentially sizable footprint. Based on trying to make this project very um, you know, a as restrictive and as as close to those protections. That we could get as possible. So if you go from thirty thousand acres down to five hundred, I'm not sure how you can construe that as this just us. Um you know, imposing the only thing that we want on our project. As a developer, you don't want to remove any flexibility that you have. Uh and we've done just that in response to what you said in those stated concerns and me listening to all of. All of 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 the points that you've been talking about. And then lastly as well. Um you know, we've even gone above and beyond all of that by selecting and providing the exact list of potential turbines. And there's language in there that agrees that we're going to go and look at using the least impactful turbines first. If you view that. As us not being willing to negotiate. I I don't, I I truly don't understand how that could be the way that you, you know, you would be. You know, maybe offended by the process because to me and what it's been and what, you know, it's intended to be this entire time. And what the result is is a good faith negotiation to try and address those concerns to the extent that they can be. And then, you know, lastly, I put up that slide whenever I gave that presentation about the issues that you specifically. Raised, what happened to Deer Creek? I actually built that slide. To be able to show you directly how we address those things. It was. These were the issues that popped up at Deer Creek, and this is how the development agreement addresses those and provides protections for neighbors. And so I can certainly, you know, give you that back as well, um you know, to just kind of continue to bring that to your. I in in front of you, but what it does, you know, I mean, I I truly think that this development agreement does provide a ton of additional protections for those folks. And so. Um it's just. It's just really surprising to me that, you know, that that you. Would kind of see all of these things to that process and look like, you know, we're. We're not willing to to negotiate because, you know, quite frankly, it's been a series of concessions from the time that this began.
I'll agree with that, that's it's it's been. We've been in a negotiable environment together. I'll agree with that. Um but the fact is, when I took you out. And showed you the difference between fifteen hundred feet and two thousand feet. And my suggestion to you is two thousand feet. I got, we're not going to do that. This is it. My suggestion to you on shadow flicker, no, we're not going to do that. That's it. Um I I just. I'm trying, Mark, but I can't do it. I just. In my head and in my heart, I know it's not right. I know it's probably the safest. Thing. To be on paper, but. It's still not the proper thing, I don't believe. Um I just. Uh that's just my point, Mark. I I can't, I can't do it. I've got it made up my mind. Sleepless nights of thinking about it and and I'm done losing sleep over it, so. I want to, I want to do what's going to be fair for everybody. I I I do, I what I said from the get go, we can, we can coincide, we can work together, we can do this, we can have. Uh wind in Worth County and we can all get along, but. I wish the setbacks and the sound would have been taken a little more serious.
And I mean, just again, it kind of hit on a point right now. I mean, if you look specifically at the unzoned portions of the county. Those protections are zero, right? I mean, there's no setback distance. There's no flicker standard. There's no. No, no sound standard. And so if you look at a development agreement. You go from from a baseline of not having any of those all the way up to something that. You know, is on par with very restricted, very conservative. Um ordinances or or agreements in counties across Iowa. And so, you know, the the negotiation really has been from. You know, from. Your perspective, bringing it all the way up and being able to provide those in this agreement. And then, you know, there's been discussion here on the very end about just how much further. But you know, if you look at the difference between zero to sixteen hundred feet or fifteen hundred feet or, you know, whatever it may be, I mean, that's a, that's a. A large jump in in written and established protections for people. That, you know, I I truly think that as a supervisor and 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 looking at at. A series of protections and and that kind of the state of concern that you want is, you know, how do we go about locking in protections? For people that, you know, maybe didn't sign up that would be around this. You know, and they're here right in front of you to be able to deliver on that promise. Um, you know, and something that I think you can point to and be really proud of, the fact that. In this negotiating process, it's come so far. Um, you know, and just, you know, looking at that and all the benefits that it can provide and, you know, not even the benefits the project can provide for the county. This has been exactly what we've set out to do, you know, and 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 just want to continue to reiterate too that that is. That it would establish those standards, which was the underlying theme of explicitly what what you had asked for. And it addresses those concerns explicitly. In in a number of different ways, you know, maybe, you know, i- is there room for you to maybe look and and want a little bit more in certain places? You know, I I I absolutely understand that, but when you look at the package overall, you look at how far it comes from what's there today. It's it's a massive jump and uh, you know, gets gets closer to what uh. What we were after from the beginning, what you all were after from the beginning.
So thanks.
Yes, sir.
Question mark. You said when you get all done looking at the setbacks from. The lakes and the residential homes and all the different setbacks that you're using to protect everything. I'm down to five hundred acres that you can put these things on. And we discussed this back in. June, when I was out there and we talked about this. And I asked you at that time, if there's only five hundred acres left out of thirty thousand acres. Are you in the wrong part of the county? I mean, that's that's not a whole lot of acres left out of thirty thousand acres. Are the houses, oh, the residential homes are close. It's where all of our wildlife is at in the county. It's got two lakes in it. We got a casino that we got to stay away from. We're down to, we're down to very few acres here.
So I would look at this and 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 maybe a different way, right? You know, I mean, from. Uh uh initially here, we do have a lot of interest in the project area. Um, you know, we've got again those thirty thousand acres of folks that. That are interested to sign. Um and while it is. Restrictive in the final locations that we have. Um, you know, we do have a. A series and, you know, essentially a list of potential turbine locations that could get us to the stated megawatt capacity here. Um, you know, so with all of those things, with these protections, with these standards in place, you can still. Deliver on the project overall, so. Um, I would look at that more as a way for the supervisors to see as, you know, hey, look, this is extremely protective. Right? I mean, I I don't think anybody could reasonably come to you all and say. Oh, it it it's got to be more here, right? You, I mean. I don't know what the percentage of thirty thousand or so some odd down to this is, but I mean, you know, to to me, that's a byproduct of a process. That was was embarked upon to establish standards and protections for people. And those protections were established here in this development agreement. So I would look at it that a way, that there's just enough for our project to continue to go through, but it's not a reflection of um. Of. Being in the wrong part of the county. I think that really the only way that we could kind of make this this series of standards work. Is because we had such a large footprint here to begin with, because so many people were interested in our project. Um, and so again, I think what it lands on and kind of what what the the takeaway would be is that it is. Just that right mix, right, of what, you know, what these standards are going to be, participating footprint. As well as, you know, imposing things on a project that gives us, you know, barely enough here to be able to kind of work through it, but, you know, we're we're happy to do it because it's. It's it's important to the county. And so we're, you know, we're here to be able to abide by that, even though it might make something a little bit more. Uh complicated here for the project.
My other question is. This development agreement that gets attached to the road. And drainage easement agreement is just for this. Designated project in the northwest part of the county, correct?
Yes, sir. So I mean, the the development agreement here. Worthwhile when worthwhile wind and 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 worthwhile wind only.
Just this project in the northwest corner. That's what this agreement, this development agreement is for.
Yes, sir. Just worthwhile when.
So then I asked you last week and Mark even said he noticed that on the map. You've still got six. Windmills down in the southeast corner that aren't in the project area. No, you're wrong. They even got them numbered and we got longitude and latitude on them.
Yes, I mean, I the answer is still the same as it was last week, right? We have that project area. Um.
Or is it not?
And e- everything, there there's never been any difference in those like signed parcels and footprints that we've had, you know, we. We sign that that land and kind of use that project areas as. You know, uh essentially a guide. So everything that you're seeing there is in that that project area, but it does have a buffer around it. That we study for the project that we have potential locations for. Uh for turbines on just a couple of those there. So I mean, everything that you've sent. Is, you know, the worthwhile wind project, and that's the only thing that, you know, th- this agreement would govern.
So it doesn't govern tho- govern those six outside?
Yeah. It it would. Um, I mean, we have participating. Agreements. On those parcels. I mean, if I can just go back in, I mean, the 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 project area is a little more arbitrary, right? I mean, you know, the project boundary. Um, but I think the main thing here is, you know, we have those agreements. It's been fully studied. It's connected all the way back, you know, to our. Our point of interconnection there and, you know, those are potential locations. Um.
If this development agreement. Is for the project area that you have outlined in blue on this map. And those six outside the project area. Then the project area should move and include those in the project area, correct?
If if you would like an updated depiction that shows the the project area with those turbines included, we can certainly do that. Do that, that that little tweak and update to make sure that it it's just clear. I think too, you know, you have an exhibit in there that shows the exact GPS coordinations of of the universe of potential. Um. Universe of potential turbine locations, right? And that's that's a a a very restrictive list still. Right? And that encompasses those as well. So, you know, again, the 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 agreement shows the exact locations. It removes the uncertainty. If you want me to go ahead and kind of go in there and, you know, and make sure that that outline is changed a little bit. Um, you know, so it's aligned, just so that there's. Not a not a perceived difference. We can certainly do that because it doesn't make any type of material.
Well, we've always went off the lines of the project area ever since way back in eighteen. So therefore, if you've got windmills outside the project area, you need to get them in there. So we know. The project area is.
Yes, sir. We'll go ahead and make that update here.
Anything else?
Uh, no, the rest of the stuff I'll straighten out. Will, he's checking on stuff for me, so.
You guys, yes, to give Mark his answer, do you want to? Set a date to vote on the. Road and. Development agreement for next Monday? As long as I get my answers, I won't. Okay. There you go, Mark.
Guys, um. I I'm in a deposition um for most of the day tomorrow, so I'll be unavailable tomorrow. I'm gonna be fairly unavailable this afternoon. I mean, I can do some small things. But I've got Wednesday, Thursday and Friday to talk to you guys. If that's enough time for you to be able to get responses, fine. But I just want to let you know my schedule if you're going to wait for me to give you answers. I think it should be fine for Monday, but just wanted to let you know. Sorry.
If we don't have everything back, we just back it up a a week quick.
Yeah, we'll tentatively put it down then for Monday. Uh, once we hear back from you, Will. With the answers that Eunice had, then we'll we'll move from there.
Thank you all.
Okay, uh, next discussion. Uh, possible action on the wind ordinance. Well, it's been presented to us months ago. Um. And obviously, we've been trying to work out an agreement. With energy, maybe we're close. But we want to. Uh, look at this ordinance and discuss. Putting it into place as long as it meets guidelines. I mean, we can obviously tweak anything, change anything. Um, that we feel necessary, but. Uh, like the homework was only boards, but pretty good as far as safety standards and and everything. Um, so I guess it's up to you guys if we'd like to. Move forward uh and have this as a discussion. And then we absolutely have set public hearings and all that, but if there's any changes or anything you want to make to it. Go ahead, Mark.
I I don't think we can vote on both of them. I mean, because they could do somewhat contradict each other. So, you know, as far as voting on one or the other, I guess I'm not sure. I do think that there's some things in there that probably need to be changed. I need to read it over again, but uh, I think things to consider would be how this would. Potentially affect TIF funds on current wind farms we have that we've already borrowed money for. We're planning on borrowing money for. For the one oh five project. Could this affect that kind of? That situation, um, you know, if they can't repower under. You know, if it affects repowering, if it affects. Several things. I think that's something to consider, right? You know, because I do, if I understand the ordinance, when I read it the first time anyway, it would affect. Current wind farms to going forward as far as repowering. You would have some of the same stipulations as. The new wind farms you're you're looking at and and I. Just not sure that needs, if it's going to be in there, if it needs to be in there, but not as restrictive or something, I'm not exactly sure. But we want to make sure this doesn't affect. The valid user tip funds too, especially for a one oh five project, you know, could could throw a monkey wrench into that. I think everything will go through personally, but it could and we need to consider that.
So I I I think everything's pretty well set with that because that's based on that project, which. Is just now up and running, so I mean.
It's not based off the Deer Creek project. It's based off current tip funds that we already have available.
Well, we plan on tipping those. Projects, yes.
It wants it comes on, not online. Gets on taxation.
Right.
My understanding is all the windmills that are out there right now, those projects, they're all grandfathered in.
Believe so. Jeff, you could answer that.
Unless they change them.
Right, the zoning ordinance, um, or the the wind ordinance rather, um, would not apply to any of the existing. any of the existing, um, wind farms. So any TIF associated with those existing wind farms would not be impacted. Right. The only impact, um, to the existing wind farms uh would come is once they reach end of life, at which time, you know, the, the TIF is based on the existing farm's existing life, right? Right, but that, that's the anticipated life of those turbines. It's after that that they, they look to see if it's advantageous for them to repurpose the turbine by upgrading that turbine. What the, the wind ordinance says is if it's a a simple upgrade of the turbine that doesn't change its dimensions and, and so on, um, then it's just viewed as a upgrade, uh, just a, a maintenance upgrade. If however, it results in, um, taking that turbine down, putting in a newer, larger turbine, um, then yes, that is, uh, considered a, a new permit requirement uh by the wind ordinance. Because it, it is in effect a new turbine. Yes, you have a, if you have a turbine of, of size, I'll make up the numbers, two hundred and fifty feet. Um, and, and all you do is, you know, you, you upgrade the guts of it, maybe some new blades and so on, and it doesn't change that two hundred and fifty feet. Um, then you're just upgrading through normal maintenance. If you, um, pull the head off, you know, pull the, the nacelle off, um, add tower structure, put it, you know, larger blades on and so on, then it is in effect a new turbine and would fall under permitting.
The actual tower height the same, but if you change the nacelle and the blade diameter, you, it falls under the new order.
Yeah, if it changes the, the total height dimensions, yeah.
So that does affect repowering an existing structure.
Well, it affects repowering if it's a change to the existing turbine. If you're repowering the existing turbine with like components.
If they're not changing any height of the tower, it still is affected because of the width of the blades.
If, yes, if they're replacing, um, the nacelle and blades with something larger, then it's different.
Then, I mean, if, if you're halfway through a process of a TIF, so you're ten years in, I mean, they've changed towers, I guess, and when they were coming within two years, I guess they, they put some up and like two years later, they changed some nacelles and blades, I guess. I don't know what the deal on that one was, but apparently technology must have developed pretty rapidly, or they built the structures through those and they couldn't get the two point fives or whatever they want for one fives, two fives or something like that. You know, if you were halfway through the TIF ordinance and you changed the structures, which I'm not sure how that, you know, when they repower, if that goes back to zero or not, I'm not exactly sure how that works. We haven't had it happen here with county, but it could, I suppose.
Just to me, it's a new structure. It should, it shouldn't go to zero. It should stay.
At a higher rate, actually.
Because it's worth, it's worth. So it should stay at the rate they're at, except the value of it's now this, instead of this, their taxation should go up at that rate. But that's what we haven't, we haven't crossed that road yet, but. And if we, if we, if this development agreement went through, we could vote on both. Because development agreement does not, it states in there that it does not have any ordinance restrictions against it. So you could, you could tax, legally vote on both. Um, because if you sign the agreement, then there's that, there's standards that there's nothing you can do to change it. The window that's would be for future.
For everybody else. And that, but you're right. We don't want to, the ones that are out there, we don't want to go backwards. We're halfway through the TIF deal. No, they should be.
I'd just assume at some point that would look at repowering. I don't know. I mean, you know, I know the ones that I'm in, we assigned in the couple of years ago, they assigned an additional, I think it was ten years. So at that time, they were only doing technology upgrades. And I don't think they call, I don't think they can repower them without rebuilding them. I, you know, I don't think they can just stick a new nacelle on top of those. I, I have no idea.
But on the other side of the coin, with doing an ordinance for even like your farm, you said that one is like eight hundred feet?
Oh, I, yeah, I'd have to measure. I'd say nine, I think it's nine. I'd have to get the contract, so I want to say it was nine fifty or twelve fifty, the original. They signed good neighbor agreements, I think, with pretty much anybody. I think at that time, I mean, they signed, I was an acre donor when they built those and we, we signed, I, I assume you would call it a good neighbor agreement. We, you agreed to some things and stuff and they gave you so many dollars a year.
I might be wrong, but I thought when I asked you a few months back how close that was to your house.
I think it's nine.
Okay. Let's say it's, it's eight, nine hundred feet away and they come in and redo it with the same thing they've got out in Deer Creek. You want it, want it in the same spot?
I'd take it in the same spot.
You would?
I actually, where I live now, I'm actually strong by three of them, about that close. My son and my son.
Right, but, but you've been out there and seen them where they're a thousand feet away. Well, in, in your case, Mark, it works. But I would say there's a lot of rural residents out there that go, wait a minute, hold it, these things need to back up.
Well, but the difference though is Mark is compensated for that.
Right, so if he wants to do it, he can do it.
Right, and that's what the ordinance suggests is that if landowners if they're not hosting a turbine, um, since the landowners that are hosting a turbine, a, a turbine, they have signed wind defects easements with Invenergy and been compensated as Mark has.
When I signed the original, I wasn't compensated. I mean, I wasn't, I was compensated two hundred and fifty dollars a year. I was just an acre donor. I wasn't, I wasn't compensated.
Right, but the, the point is that there was a discussion with you as a non-hosting landowner and you had reached a, you had reached an agreement. And that's what the ordinance is asking for, for everybody. And it just, instead of relying on the good nature of the energy company and, and turbine hosting landowners to have those conversations with Mark, it just institutionalizes that requirement in the ordinance that those conversations are, are, are made.
I apologize for that. I just figured you wouldn't want to get woke up and major, hear him inside your house. I anticipated my shindig. But yeah, you're.
I can't hear anyways.
But I think that those residential rural homeowners should have a right if they get, if you go from a, if you go from a windmill like Deer Creek or, or down here at Bristol, out to a windmill like that, you should have the right to say, wait a minute, hold it, guys. You know, so.
Like I said, it's something we need to obviously discuss, and if there's some things in there that we want to change and talk about and discuss it, then that's what the point of it is, basically.
And, and that's what we're doing, yeah. It's time to discuss it, what we like about it, what we don't like about it. You know, so that's a good point that you brought up, the existing stuff that we got out there. I didn't, I, you're gonna grandfather everything in. Like Deer Creek, you're gonna grandfather it, because it's all brand new. It's not gonna change for a while, under its current status. But yeah, when that things, if that should change during them twenty years of TIF, that could cause a problem for Worth County. Make sense?
Yeah, well.
There's a lot of ifs, and I, maybe not all will ever happen, but there is some ifs.
Yeah, and there's, well, we take those, those ifs, those chances when we TIF anything too, because let's just say technology don't change in ten years, they just snap the whole wind process and do something different.
Yeah, there's always, that's one of those.
Twelve years from now, they come up with a different way to produce electricity. We could be in big trouble if we got them peppered across the county.
Those the TIF impacted when one of them starts on fire and burns up and is out of operation?
I asked that question over here once, and I asked that there's one in Bristol that they did take down. Did they ever request it to be taken off the property tax rule?
They never did. We just did it.
I mean, you have one, I think, just to know, said the interstate right now, it's obsolete. It actually would be obsolete because the moratorium is allowing, not allowing them to fix it, actually. So that one, they could actually, you know, there's, well, I got that sheet, we could bring it up. Each one of them brings in three, four thousand dollars or something like that.
Yes, oh, you can hear me? Okay, because I didn't have the phone on. Um, as of right, the ones that have burnt down, we have taken the value off of that. And then to date, all of our wind turbines that we have out there, none of them have restarted, um, been repurposed from the zero to thirty scale again. So they've been out there for what, twenty years? And, and right now, there's been no request or no upgrades um, to have them start from the zero to thirty scale again.
Like the Bristol farm, which we found out is, it's strictly, it goes right into the general fund right now. The one I'm in, I suppose, in the general fund, there's one, I don't know if they ever tipped. But.
That was a question I had. Well, I talked to you that day about it. Was it ever tipped?
I, I don't know, because we're, we're not involved in the TIF side of it.
Right. I don't think that one ever was tipped. It was pretty relatively new at that time. I don't think counties are utilizing it very well. What's that?
Two thousand and two. They started it in two thousand and one, but it went operational.
Two thousand and nine is when they tipped the rules. I don't know. That would have been.
That would have been. Second phase.
We signed the TIF ordinance in ninety five.
Oh, the, uh, the taxation.
But I don't think they did.
But they didn't do it on the first one, though.
So. I was just curious if they'd ever taken them or requested to be taken off.
They, they never have. We've just taken it off.
And we never borrow one hundred percent of what we can utilize. I mean, you always do, you'll say one or two came off, you have cushion. But, you know, and then there's always that big question, is it halfway through it, if they repowered or if something happened, took them out? There's always that question, you know?
With regard to repowering, um, if, if they're going to repower the turbines, it's likely they're going to want to repower larger, higher capacity types of turbines, um, which generally means they can get higher capacity with fewer turbines. And so taking some sites, you know, offline, uh, I, I think would be perfectly fine. And you're still going to get the evaluation of the additional, um, sizes of the fewer turbines.
More than likely equal the same.
I don't think it's gonna have.
Your value would be as a second or greater or less.
Clause would have a, a necessarily detrimental financial impact to TIF.
When it comes, when it comes to TIF awful, also, um, you got to think if it's ten way, ten years into the project, if they were to repower, restructure, make it bigger, the value goes down to zero again. So you're gonna lose TIF money no matter what, once they repower, because it goes to that zero to thirty scale.
Start, it starts over again.
Starts over, but you always have a lag time where hopefully the new ones will be coming on as fast as the old ones are going off, but.
Thanks, Cindy.
We need to. Something we need to look at down the road here.
Something I think it has to be changed to state possibly. We strictly follow the state ordinance, I think, and they have, you know, ours follows exactly what the state.
The taxation. We could do either way, I think, but that would be.
That's how they set it up in nineteen ninety five.
Yeah, they accepted the, the zero to thirty way. Because you can't just go a hundred percent or whatever the ninety percent is.
Hey, Mark Crowe, are you still online?
Yes, sir. So here.
We talked about this out to the welcome center back here in July when you showed me the maps. And I, of course, said to you at the same time that I would, I would much rather do a, get you to be able to work with us under the zoning than do the development agreement. Because I, I said the permit money would go into the general fund where we really need it instead of into TIF, and you told me, don't TIF the project. You still stand by that?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's not my place to, to talk to, to kind of have that discussion with you all. I think the, the point of the comment is just that, you know, those things are, you know, different TIF or whatever mechanism you may have to benefit from the funds of a project or, or up to you all. So it's not necessarily my position to tell you, um, you know, what, what to do with the funds. I think you all obviously are intimately involved, uh, with where those dollars could be used the best. And, you know, just to me, personally, that's, you know, I think one of the great benefits of these projects, the fact that they can kind of help with, with countywide, countywide improvements that all the residents of Worth County can, can benefit from. Yes, sir.
Enos, can I speak on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
If, if that was an option to where you weren't going to do it in TIF, then you might as well void four twenty seven point twenty six B and charge them one hundred percent of the value. Because if that was to go away, that was approved in nineteen ninety five, then we would value them at a hundred percent.
Right.
Just keep that in mind when it comes to tipping and not tipping.
And I realize that, yeah. That was, I just, Mark and I had a conversation about it and I just wanted to double check what they wanted, but.
Well, let's, um, on those then comments, let's look through this ordinance again, highlight whatever, let's discuss a little more next week. And see if there's changes that we'd like to look into that to be made or not be made, but do I use this ordinance? Yeah, and is everything appear to be okay? So that's the big, the big thing is whether it's for this project or the next project, it's, so, you know, something's been presented to us and we do, we need that kind of put in place. Um, we have until July, so I'd like to see if we'll go quicker than that, but that is our, our deadline, so to speak, so. Let's do that. Let's just find out and discuss this a little more next week. On the questions that you guys have with the, with that, so. But if there's any others that you can pop up as you're reading through it again. Uh, people service, Chris Myers.
Okay, you know, this morning, I might have worked late, but I was gone and I get it back in time and I can't get into our server to get it out. I don't know if you've got time to read it or not. If you have any questions, I can answer them. Um, long as we've been doing good, um, I had a point three for the month and our permit limit, limit is one point one, so we're good. That's been really good. I had a hiccup first week of this month. We had thunderstorm and it kicked the computer out in the middle of the night and it was a high flow night, so that one was tied, but my limit jumps up to one point six and with the, I had a zero the second week and I'm at a one point eight right now, so if we get another zero, it'd be, hopefully it worked out, so.
Did, uh, the new pump in the lift station, are they go good with that?
Yeah, that one too, yeah, yeah.
Good, um, and we're talking before, just looking back to your report on the water tower situation. Well, we haven't really gotten any estimates yet on what it would cost to just have temporary setup. But me personally, I could see that being well over a hundred thousand dollars. Because we're telling you to do that for a month.
Right.
It'll be, it'll be the better part of a month for them to get that tower. Plus taking up room, you know, and so we've had the discussion of possibly hooking up that blue one. And I think we might look a little harder into that because we could take those dollars there and put towards connecting the blue one. You know, if it's a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a temporary setup and by the time you pay it to coat everything, do all that, why not just put that money towards hook the yellow one up? We're still gonna eventually have to coat that tower, we know that, but at least we don't have the temporary.
Yes.
Which is waste, you know, I should have wasted, we have to do it, but it's, it is wasted money that you throw away, you get nothing out of, so you may as well get something out of it.
Right.
Oh, and then we've always got a backup plan where if something does go down, the one or the other needs coated, you can just switch towers and switch back and forth. Um, it's there, the tower, the big, the blue tower's not going anywhere. It's, may as well utilize it.
Right.
At some point, we may need it anyways, so.
Are you still looking at ARP money to do that?
Possibly doing that. That's been one of our discussions here, so.
It'd be good use of that money, yeah, yep.
Um, it says to get our infrastructure a little better, so.
And, you know, if we grow like we hope it'll grow, we're gonna need a plant, place for a new water plant, and that'd be a place to take a new water plant out there.
Yep, you could. That's what talked about it. I know Melissa's been trying to push that, that area too to sell. County has like seventeen acres up there, whatever, well, I said, no matter what, you are talking to people, keep the, the, uh, basically square that two or three acres off that we need, that tower straight north, so if we ever need a plant, we've got, we put a plant in there. And then the rest could, you know, possibly get sold off too. And then the rest could, you know, possibly get sold off too.
I wouldn't sell it, but.
Right, it's, I mean.
Yeah, I would keep it. You're better off to keep it and farm it and let people rent it out for A or whatever. Cause of, you know, you don't know, that building you ever put in there, that's the problem.
So, I would say that's the least of our worries. It's just been discussed by a couple.
Right.
Greenhouse facilities and things like that of possibly go in that direction, but it's supposed to be one. Yeah, so. But anyway, yeah, more so, we'll see how that goes and maybe get something together for that blue tower, so. Is that any for Chris?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, homework, did you see any paperwork yet? From, uh, Chris?
No.
But she's gone.
Department heads, everybody. Man.
Um, I'll let Mark talk about hurdle. We were down there in our meeting. Um, do have the Northwood contract coming up tonight for, in front of the whole council, which I'll be at. Only other thing I have is all of our cars are in. Um, I've talked with our installer, and hopefully we're gonna be able to generate them all the way through by the second week in November and have them out and on the road, or almost down the road.
Did you see our materials? Grab them. I'll put it back, I'll write it down. I thought I put it in my, I'm just looking at my calendar. I thought I put it in there, but I'll look back the email. So you guys did talk to Joyce?
Oh, fertile.
What do I mean?
Very well receptive, meaning they realized, you know, they can't touch law enforcement, even once we work our way up to. You know, get up to where Dan wants to be, um, they can't touch your own law enforcement for that. They really appreciate having presence over there, um. Yeah, it was very well, and we had a really good conversation about other things, about even about our new mental health district, and I think they thanked us for doing that, and, and just things are. It's very good discussion.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. Uh, Mark Thomas has put us a chat on here, that, uh, public information officer courses tomorrow. From eight to noon, the O C. And there's still hand soap available, if anybody should need any, need any.
You were alone when I was there, one.
Sounds like we got rules of it, which.
Quite a bit. Call my distribution, took it to the church and set it up there.
Um. See, I don't know if you guys, any of you guys participate in that, uh, I think I might try to come up, so. I probably won't, obviously. I'm gonna try to make it.
If you do, your cover is on, yeah.
Yeah, it's all right, cool. And then. Okay, well, you know, department heads, or is that it?
So we raise weekly, Mr. Goldberg. Uh. One for city for the WHW County Social Service meeting on Friday.
Thank you.
I'll stop up. Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that.
We didn't have a quorum, so I brought you back the paperwork. Um, the only thing Sandy said was she's thinking about retiring.
Oh.
And she wants. Us to think about. Possibly between now and July twenty-first, so July twenty-first when it comes up of next year. She thinks that we need to increase the salary position from thirty thousand that it's on. Because she doesn't think we're gonna get a replacement in there for thirty thousand dollars for the job she's doing. So just it's something for you to, it's just who forgot. So.
So you might have to have some meetings with the other. Counties.
To.
You're still gonna do that?
Yeah.
Yep, so. But, and then you guys got.
Yes, yeah, put it on my calendar.
Gotcha. Run it on your sheets.
All I had was. Dan, I missed, totally missed that, and I had another one. I just wasn't able to attend to either, but yeah, I went with Dan to fertile, so like I said, everything over, well. It's more coming up, but yeah. Towns really, it's still pretty good value for what they're getting, so.
Uh, I didn't have any last week, so. Good luck. All right. Anything else is on the agenda, more future?
I'll put the new WHW, Sandy sent it to me too.
And then I'm just coming on Thursday, correct, for that Jackie, the election thing. Thursday.
You're.
Yeah.
That's just me, right?
And Dan.
And Brownies, yeah.
Working.
All right.
It's only one time I wait to.
Oh, my.
Here's, we fulfill our agenda, so I'll take most to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I'll take right.
All right.
All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.